I'll tell you one.
Good evening, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the planet of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I just give you my phone, let's have the technical thing.
Thanks, Evan.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's meeting is a bit surreal as we're taking place with no live audience, our Board of Education members participating by conference call, and a handful of staff members socially distanced around our boardroom. The setting is emblematic of the current affairs of our country. It's both unprecedented and a bit frightening. It's as if someone has hit the pause button and everything that we cherish or take for granted has frozen in place. Shuttered schools, empty movie theaters, dark storefronts, and even broke down playgrounds. No one could have ever imagined that we would experience a real life version of the movie outbreak. While our situation today may be unparalleled, we are very fortunate that history has given us a roadmap to endure. It is precisely in these pivotal and uncertain moments that our country has always shined the brightest. Nine eleven horrified us, but unleashed a wave of patriotism from sea to shining sea. Pearl Harbor caught us off guard, but birthed the greatest generation. The Civil War threatened to tear us apart, but was a vital step in our becoming a more perfect union. While we triumph in these difficult times due to our compassion and our courage, strong leadership is just as important. Our darkest moments have always produced an enduring image of a resolute, steady leader. Whether FDR proclaiming a day of inti me, Ron Grager, Ron Reagan utterly uttering, eloquently uttering that the Challenger crew was on its journey to touch the face of God, or George W. Bush standing on a pile of rubble at the World Trade Center with a megaphone. These leaders did not expect to face these crises, but they were ready to lead and offer words of courage and hope. This crisis also presents an opportunity, an opportunity to show that the American spirit is strong. Strong enough to put aside our vicarious, strong enough to survive a complete shutdown of our most prized institutions. Strong enough to demonstrate empathy in a time of crisis, and strong enough to appear brave even when we might be scared on the inside. And in this time, we are very blessed. We're blessed to have doctors and nurses on the front lines, pharmacists to fill out prescriptions, grocery store workers to fill our shelves, refuse labors to collect our trash, and so many other essential workers who have spent time away from their family and put themselves at risk. Thank you to them all. And in South Huntington, we are also blessed to have leaders like our superintendent Dr. Bernarda, who rises to every challenge with a well-defined plan, who communicates so transparently and eloquently, and responds to every single parent email from out of the time of the day. We're blessed to have teachers who sit care so deeply for their students, and blessed to have food service workers willing to leave their home to distribute meals to hundreds of students a day. These resources will ensure that our schools remain a bedrock of our community, even in the most challenging of times. And these resources will help us eventually return to normalcy. And things indeed will return to normal at some point, even if we cannot tell when or the exact date. And when we do reopen our school pass doors, hopefully, we will be stronger for enduring this crisis, more thankful of life's many blessings, and more appreciative of the little things that sometimes we take for granted. God bless you all, stay well, and I believe that better days are ahead. With that said, we're going to go into our more normal activities, our 2020-2021 budget work session, and I'll turn it over to our leader, Dr. Bernarda.
Good evening, everyone. Well, a little bit of orthodox in that we'll, we'll speak from our seats because of the distance situation, the microphones just make it easier for us to communicate and to be heard than that. So if it's not our style, we'll sit, just bear with us and know that you'll do the best you can with the limitations you have. We've kind of coming, believe it not, to the closer to the tail end of our, our budget presentations, and it seems to have fallen from the, the front view mirror pretty quickly because we were working on so many other things over these past two weeks that weren't expected. But certainly, it's critically important because that's the, that's the funding. Those are the finances that are going to keep our school district afloat next year and the lifeblood of our operations. So, you know, we began our, our trip with analysis of prior year's budgets. We talked about the beneath nature of state aid this year and the steps and the process. And when we, when we talk about the beneath nature of state aid, you'll recall that once again, we received just a little over one percent, and we wanted to, we, we met with the Assembly Chair of Education, we met with the Senate Chair of Education, we met with the donors people. So one of our, our goals has been to get South Huntington on the front burner in all these people's minds. I think we did that. Again, things got real busy and real crazy quickly on them. So I know that they're preoccupied, but we need to keep our district on the front burner. One of the problems with the state aid process, state aid packages, it was made forty, fifty years ago formula, sometimes sixty in some cases years ago, pieces of it, and you end up with real inequities in terms of need. So there are, there are situations where the South Huntington School District is seeing the same percentage of state aid to their budget as places like Platte and Willow Place. And we don't begrudge them a penny of, of their operating money, but certainly we have some unique needs and characteristics that we just need to keep in the conversation. We, very little has changed in terms of class size, which is a good thing. This Board of Education and building administration and staff remain committed to maintaining some real nice balanced class size. If you remember, nine, ten years ago, one of the board's primary goals was to bring those class size numbers down. We've done so. They remain pretty, pretty clean in terms of consistency. You'll see these are our, our elementary class sizes on the screen. These are projections. And I always remind everyone that they're projections because population changes over the summer and even right into the fall. But right now, best information, these are the class size numbers, and we're real happy with your balance. We continue to, to look at Silas Wood, and you'll notice all the way from English straight through the science region, uh, science, region of science and honors math, we're between twenty-three and twenty-five, with an average of twenty-four. And that's what the board, exactly where the board wants to keep it. Simpson seventh grade numbers, again, range from twenty-two. You've noticed they always try to keep English a little bit lower. A, because we believe that English language adds to the foundation of, of success in all subjects, and also because the, the certainly research has shown that in English language, especially, the individual contact is critical. So we keep those around twenty-two. And you'll see you've got the music, which is twenty-one, very depending on, on class interest, on interest in the performing arts. Eighth grade, very similar numbers. We just always, we kept English really, really nice and clean. The honors classes will get a little bit compired at times. That's typical in school settings. But nevertheless, everything stayed nicely in the twenties. And the high school numbers, and having been a high school principal, I can tell you, high school numbers are a real stab in the dark because high school electives constantly change. When the elected changes, it changes the whole building structure in, in terms of student choices. We like to give students a lot of choice. When you give students a lot of choice, it means a lot of changes. And so we kind of did roll with that. So you see our numbers remain between twenty-one and twenty-seven primarily, and within somewhere around twenty-five. We want to keep it that way.
Alright, good evening, everyone. This is Dr. Delia. Hope everybody's doing well. This is the part of presentation where we break down the codes. So you can see we have our thousand, two thousand, five thousand, seven thousand, nine thousand code. And obviously, if you look at the percentages, you look at instruction, our two thousand code, that is the biggest code. And obviously, those are curriculum, teacher, and salaries. But in the future slides, we will break this down a little bit further. Okay, the general support, the thousand code, that basically is the Board of Education, superintendent office, and basically the functions that happen here at JKAO. And you can see within the business office, there's many different areas. And then we're now going to break these codes down a little bit. If you look in one of the areas that I focus on, could be all the way to the right, percentage change. And at the bottom right, you see the grand total where we're down, basically just a shade, point three two percent. We had a little increase in central storage, twenty point five eight, but that's because we moved, and I have our wind cap, financial management, small warehouse system into that code, and that's why it's a shade bit higher.
So in terms of the instruction code, two thousand, like Dr. Delia said, as a school district, we would expect that the majority of budget would be comprised of this area. As you can see, about fifty-six, fifty-seven percent. And it's everything from our leadership, through our teaching, through our athletics, and our libraries. I'll highlight with you, in terms of that first three point nine percent to the right, you know, that's largely due to some budget code adjustments. These are various administrative offices around the supervision of curriculum. In terms of, you go down a couple of codes to special education, basically that's to address stamping supplies and equipment. As we turn to the next slide, if you notice to the right, that eight point oh six percent, that is largely due to technology initiatives. But I would also want to highlight that within that number, we also have funding for our school libraries, which obviously a big part of that will also be money for book purchases.
Okay, five thousand code, transportation. As we do each year here at South Huntington, we rotate and purchasing buses. We, this past year, we purchased two large buses, and next year for 2021, we're going to be purchasing three small buses that run about fifty-five thousand dollars each. And obviously, the functions within transportation, we have our bus transportation center, which includes our supervisor, dispatcher, the office staff, drivers, agents, and mechanics. And we also have contract transportation with Acton Bound and Huntington Coach that takes care of our, a lot of our private ones, and Bound spent the most of their money on at the secondary level. And you see here, we go down to contract transportation. That number looks a little large. One of the reasons for that is because the RFP for Bound last year went out after the budget was developed. So there's a little increase there, and so we accounted for that going forward into next year's budget.
So at the teen center, this budget line is remaining constant. There'll be no increase. But at the teen center, we do provide a vital service for our students in their health program. That's a program that provides students who require a, a, a small setting.
Yeah, nine thousand code, it has to do with benefits. Yes, it has to do with our benefits, and you see there was a little increase, but we'll be explaining a little further as we go on. And obviously, the function within benefits are our medical, our health insurance, dental, disability. You know, to the right, we have our retirement systems, ERS, employee retirement system, and TRS, our key retirement system. And we have social security, workers' comp, and life insurance policies. Basically, you can see here, and with our benefits, on this one, we're down about point two oh percent in total. I know the health and dental insurance, it does, you see a decrease. I don't know if you've seen a decrease, but there is a slight one there. And not so much, you know, at the years go on, I'm not sure if that's going to always be there, but we do have a slight decrease. And within our debt service, also within the nine thousand code, are our capital projects. And we also have, if you look at that last bullet under capital projects, we are having an energy performance contract. We're moving on that. It's really exciting. A lot of wonderful things and cost-saving items that will be in there that will benefit our community tremendously. So we're very excited about moving forward with that. You can see here within our debt service, you can just some of the expenses that we have, and it's pretty consistent among us. And here we have our interfund transfers. This is where we have our transfer to capital. We're super excited about four projects that we have moving forward into next year, which has to do with the Whitman Forum, which we're looking to renovate. Also, the expansion parking lot over at Simpson Middle School, the girls' softball field. And the entranceway into the pack where we're going to widen the steps and beautify the landscape. We're very excited to come up with these projects with the facilities committed.
Here we talk about reserve notes. And one of the things that we've been talking with the community about from last year to this year is that we are using a, a significant series of reserves every year to fund our operating budget. That's by design with the expectation that that number will gradually, the amount of reserve use will gradually come down in a, in a very targeted, methodical way. We come down about a million dollars this year. We want to come down about a million next year. So we're going to go from about thirty, we think, because you don't really know until you close your books. And when you have one hundred and seventy-five million dollar budget, you don't know to the penny what you're going to be spending. For example, there'll be some savings by the fact that we're not open right now, and there'll be some spending, given the fact that we're, we're fighting virus right now, we're fighting influenza, plague agents, whatnot. So that shakes out at the end of the year, and we think when it shakes out, we'll be somewhere around ten, eight point three, twenty-nine million. That's our estimate, which is right where we expect it to be. We are recommending reserve use of about three point seven five million and fund balance carryover of four point three million. Two very different terms. Fund balance is the money that you use each year as you're pushing with the expectation of hopefully not spending it, so you can use it as funding money next year. I always tell people to think of it as fund balance is the emergency money you take away on vacation. You have to have the two hundred dollars in the pocket when you're on vacation, just in case something happens and you have to use it. What you prefer not to, because it's definitely going to cut into next year's vacation. So you really want to preserve that money for cash. Reserve use is different. Reserve use is the money that you expect to take out of the bank and use without the idea of replacing.
Okay, we're, we're off to a doctor. Just looking at our reserves of this year, looking in the left-hand column of the 2021, you can see ERS and workers' comp and EBR, employee, employee, employee improvement, level of reserve. That is, those are the three reserve areas that we're taking our money from this year. And as Dr. Ronald said, there is a reduction of six hundred, of a, I'm sorry, five hundred thousand dollars in reserves, and a reduction of six hundred thousand dollars within our fund balance. So we're trying to, each year, going to try and focus on using, being less dependent on reserves and fund balance moving forward. And if you look down, because I know there's a lot of numbers on this paper, if you look down the bottom right corner, you see the budget, the budget increase is two point zero five percent, so we're in line with the needs of the community and obviously within our tax debt.
Again, I kind of got a little bit ahead of myself, but the, the plan to reduce reserve use, it's, it's a long-term plan. It's a plan that's very balanced. It does require adequate state aid funding each year. We, you'll see in a moment of view, if we go one more forward, you'll see that we, knowing it requires certain state aid funding and knowing that we're tremendously underfunded to the tune of, of a little over twenty million dollars, we're underfunded for a district of, of, of our size and demographics. So we've really had a listening ear up already. Senator Gore, I think, great, something concerned, they were wonderful with us. Senator Benadette, who chairs the Education Committee, is at South Huntington Plan. Jeffers Meyer from the Senate was one of the sharpest people I've ever heard speak, and we sat with her for an hour. So they know our, our situation. They know that it's important. Like I said before, in all honesty, I know that their minds are filled with many other things right now, and I realize that the world landscape changed drastically between the last time we spoke to you and now. However, I keep reminding everyone that when, when the, when the smoke clears, when the fog clears on the coronavirus, which God willing, it will, we're still going to be here next year, and we're still going to need our state aid. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to be respectful of the worldwide situation, and at the same time, provide gentle reminders that we need to punch in a meaningful call for our kids next year.
Just going to kind of wrap up our budget here. Basically, we're asking for the 2021 school year. We have a total budget of one hundred seventy-six million, nine hundred thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, it is a budget-to-budget increase of two point zero five percent. And as we've been mentioning in all the budget presentations, we do have some properties that are for sale. I'm just going to quickly run through them. We had our old library, which has been for sale since September. We had a piece of property here at JKAO. It's about two point seven acre piece off to the southern side of a building. We also have our teen center, which is directly across the street from Old Whitman High School. And the softball field is going to be relocated over to Memorial, as I mentioned, as one of our transfer capital projects for next year. Obviously, the sales are approved, are subject to a voter approval. And the priority, it's Board of Education, is what we can get those sales going, would be for capital projects, safety and security upgrades for our staff, students, including.
As we go into the next school year, 2020, 2021, the goals for the district remain constant. We, we are continuing to strive for excellence, look to meet our student needs, to close achievement gaps, to make sure that we're physically sustainable and responsive to our community, and as Dr. Delia just said, with safety and security always a paramount to us. Upcoming budget dates are on the screen, with the next date being April twenty-one, which will be the budget for adoption, culminating in the May nineteen vote, as those dates are currently established by the state.
Okay, it's been thought already that these dates are going to be fluid, and we may be moving back both the board elections and the budget date to some further date, but that's what we're working on right now. Does the Board of Education have any questions on the presentation? Is it flag, are there any questions from the president? Conclude the presentation. Dr. Larg, Dr. Sennett, Dr. Delia, excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Fantastic, in very good circumstances. Excellent. All right. With that said, we will move into our regular business agenda. The people at home, as I mentioned before, so that we comply with recommendations of gathering, the social distance. The Board of Education is calling in from conference phone, and this is an acceptable way to do it. There'd be the governor's executive orders and the open meetings law. And so we'll work through the agenda, and we'll do it the same way, where we ask for motion and second. So we'll start a motion to adopt the agenda.
I.
Motion, I'm second. Motion by Ms. Carey, seconded by Mr. Nickwitz. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And the opposed? Item C through F are adopted. Item C through F, the minutes and scheduled bills require one resolution for adoption. Motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey? Seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nickwitz? All in favor? Item C through F?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C through F are adopted. Communications, we have two communications. We have both letters from Western Suffolk Bosse's. One is regarding the Western Suffolk Bosse's annual meeting on April seventh, and then the second is about their elections on the seventh and their budget. Moving into new business. New business item number one is a request to remain in South Huntington schools. Is there a motion?
Aye.
Ms. Carey?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nickwitz? And Ms. DeGatano?
Second.
Two seconds. Any questions on this request to remain in South Huntington schools? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Request to remain is granted. Next item is the approval of a donation from Long Island's Finest Home Platinum Properties. Motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by Mr. Nickwitz?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nickwitz. This is a donation from Long Island's Finest Home to the amount of twelve hundred and fifty dollars. It's been a long-running donation that they've made to support our spotlight. They've been excellent friends of South Huntington. The Board have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All? All opposed? All right. Donation is accepted. Item three is another donation, this one from Huntington Mazda. Motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by Mr. Nickwitz? This is a donation from Huntington Mazda to the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars with the district's calendars and Mr. Nobr, our procurer. So we thank him as well as thanking Huntington Mazda. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Donation is accepted. Item number four is the approval of conference attendance. Motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, second?
Second.
Of Mr. Nickwitz? This is for the director of the school lunch fund to attend a school nutrition conference in July. Hopefully, she'll be able to attend. It's called See the Possibilities. It's an annual, or annual conference that she goes on. Board have any questions on the conference? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Item number five is the approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Huntington YMCA. Motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by?
Aye, second.
Seconded by Mr. Nickwitz. Dr. Bernarda, can we tell some about this M O A?
Absolutely. One of the requirements and the requirement that we wholeheartedly agree with due to the current international health crisis is that school districts provide some childcare plan for the children of first responders and medical personnel. And the governor asked that we have those plans into him. First, we know the school was closed. We did so. We, a couple of groups have done it. A couple of groups are still that point. One of the groups is Scope. The other group that we have a longstanding relationship with is the YMCA. The Y is running childcare for children of, for children of first responders and healthcare at Country Road. And we are working in a partnership with them in terms of funding and in terms of support. So we thank the Y. First of all, we thank our first responders and medical personnel on the front lines, and we thank the Y for helping us meet the needs of the people that are helping us.
Thank you, Dr. Bernarda. Does the Board have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Remise is approved. Next item is a resolution for hourly employees. Motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by?
Aye.
And DeGatano or Mr. Nickwitz? Dr. Bernarda, would you like to explain this resolution?
Yes, this is, similarly, we have a lot, we're doing a lot of firsts. And last time we approved a resolution like this was during Hurricane Sandy, in that the governor has asked for districts to come up with some plan for compensating hourly personnel and part-time personnel during this crisis. This is a plan allowing the Board of Education authorized us to pay, pay those personnel and keep them whole. I know that whether or without the governor's executive order, this board has always believed that those people are people, are their people, and they're a precious resource. So we wanted to bring it forward though, so it's memorialized as a Board of Education decision that this, this, this board was out ahead of the governor's executive order, and we want to thank them for that.
Board have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh the resolution is adopted. And I thank Dr. Bernardo for bringing this to us and the Board for adopting this. I think it's very important to show this respect for our workers and this continuity in this very difficult time. People are obviously worried about their health and safety, particularly worried about their financial prosperity during this difficult time and hopefully this uh gives them some comfort. Next item is the resolution for the hiring of personnel, motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by?
Aye.
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 Ms. Nickwitz and Ms. DeGatano? This is a resolution to hire personnel, similar to what we do in the summer. So just in case, you know, there's a lapse of meetings or in-between meetings, uh Dr. Bernardo is authorized to hire personnel on an urgency basis so that he can deal with the coronavirus crisis. Does the Board have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The resolution is adopted.
And I I I thank the Board and also let you know that I think, as you know, and we'd always communicate with you, um there are many boards that don't have a relation with the superintendent to put this kind of trust and that trust would never be abused, I can guarantee that, this this team would always keep it in the loop. But thank you for letting us move lean and fast uh in responding to the crisis, thanks.
Next item is the approval of a multi-year agreement with Bosys, motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by?
Uh, aye.
Aye.
Ms. Nickwitz and Ms. DeGatano. Uh Doc uh Dr. Senamore?
Thank you, Mr. Spender. So this is a five-year agreement with Bosys that would address three core areas. One, the Windows ten upgrade across the district. Two, our six through twelve one-to-one initiative. And three, it'll bolster our cybersecurity and and to and uh and more to be compliance.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Senamore. Does the Board have any questions on new business item A? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution is carried. Item number nine, recommendations for the placements of students by the Committee on Special Education, dates listed in January, February and March, and the Committee on Preschool Special Education, dates listed in February and March, motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by?
Aye.
Ms. DeGatano and Mr. Nickwitz. Any questions on the placements? All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed? Okay, resolution nine carries. Moving on to personnel, we have personnel schedules nine, sixteen, twenty and twenty-two, motion to discuss?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, seconded by?
Aye.
Mr. Nickwitz, any question on personnel schedules nine, sixteen, twenty and twenty-two? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Personnel schedules are carried, information and reports are listed and then future meetings, God willing, April twenty first. Uh the James back at James Gate will determine in what form, April twenty eighth, May twelfth, and then our budget vote perhaps on May nineteenth. Comments by board members?
Mrs. Spender, I will uh two quick comments today.
Yes.
One is uh we, if you can remember about a month and a half back, we learned in the public that the state had designated us as a target school because of a subgroup of students that not enough of that particular subgroup of students had taken the state exams to the state's satisfaction and they therefore uh designated us in need of targeted assistance. So I have to tell you by law, I think that you all know our feeling on this particular situation and I don't think we back our parents into a corner regarding tests and we have uh we do have to tell you that this is what the state is requiring me to tell you and and I've done so and and there would be a letter thrown home saying that we've been designated as a target school because of uh it's this strange back map and they call it technically, it goes to Countrywood because they weren't pleased with a particular, not Countrywood, but the state wasn't pleased with a particular number of students in a particular subgroup who took the third grade uh test. So that's that for what it's worth. Um and the other piece, and I know Mrs. Spender, you asked me to talk a little bit about our digital learning plan. Now a couple of things, first of all, a big thank you to our community for being patient as we shift uh education as we know it completely. And uh a thank to our staff, we've uh we've not gone through many of the battles that other districts have gone through with their staff over these situation and and it's because of the relationships we have. Uh basically, uh the second we closed, first week, a week if you recall, and then the government two weeks. And we certainly have every reason to believe, although we hasn't yet, that there'll be another extension of some sort. Um we don't know how long. So at this point, we our decision initially, and it was a judgment call, was to start right away with groups we could. So I know our six through twelve students and staff, because we already have Chromebooks and a one-to-one initiative, uh started right away on the distance learning and I've run into a lot of those students and and uh you know, they 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 told me that it's it's oven cooking and a lot of the staff. Um it's just a little bit more natural to do with a secondary student because um it's a little more challenging to give the partner with a with a with a six or seven year old. Nevertheless, we are our staff got us a bunch of materials for those younger kids and we got started with them on some some general review material and then by Monday, our staff at those levels now takes into either uh clever or Google Classroom uh instruction there. So by then, everyone will be on those classrooms. Nothing replaces a classroom teacher, nothing ever will, but we're gonna do everything we can to make these days meaningful. What what a handful of schools did was they declared the first week we were closed spring break and the second week, snow days. And the reason they did that was they had nothing to get going. Our six through twelve teachers, because we have a one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks already, they're completely ready to go and our uh elementary teachers were able to get a a group of things together. So we didn't do that, um we started right away and uh just a difference of of opinion on that. I know a neighboring superintendent said that, you know, his parents were asking why we started right away and I explained we have, you know, we didn't do all this upfront, it was just a choice. So I wanna thank our parents, uh we've been iterating new suggestions. I wanna thank uh Ms. Callahan and his teachers, they have been absolutely fantastic in terms of what can we do for our kids, they're asking us every day and our teaching assistants as well. Um and while we're at it, uh our food service workers, Shield U C, um your your staff has been on some heroes on the front lines feeding over three hundred students a day and we're very thankful for that. Our custodians have not missed a beat, round school custodians have been here every day. We have uh security guards helping us to look at things. We have secretaries working at home, um and and secretaries that go on the plane in as well, will also work at home. So the family's working, I don't know how long this will last, but I can tell you that we try to get better each day and um while I hope we're back together soon, we're gonna really work to to keep things as meaningful as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Bernardo, excellent. And once again, thank you for everything that you've done in this time. Uh your tenure started with a uh with a hurricane or a super storm and then we made it to the global pandemic. And through all of these uh instances, you've demonstrated great leadership and in this instance, there is no playbook for how to respond to a global pandemic. There's, you know, we're used to natural disasters or at least we have a little more experience on them. This is unprecedented and I don't think we've missed a beat. So I wanna thank you and your team for everything that you've done in these weeks and I think by and large, everyone in the community uh is very appreciative.
And we're blessed, no, uh not to belate your point, but there are superintendents and cabinets and and unions that are in constant conflict with their board and that we're in constant support, our board is in constant support of us and uh asking what I what we need. And believe it or not, when you're not raising resources, fighting each other, you have you can do a lot better things for students, so thank you all.
Also wanna thank everyone who helped uh pull this meeting off uh rather seamlessly uh under difficult circumstances. Dr. Bernardo again, Dr. Senamore, Dr. Delia coming and presenting, uh Ms. McLean uh for putting together the agenda, uh Mrs. Cirovolo for building it, Mrs. Savarys for giving us the great microphones, uh and the Board of Education for adapting so so seamlessly. We don't know uh when this will end, but I think and I hope that the community has great confidence in us that as long as it goes on, we'll be doing right by the community and right by our students. Ms. McLean, are there uh any voices of the residents?
Uh, we do have one.
Okay.
Or Mrs. Dale.
Okay.
President of the um teacher assistants and the power professionals. And she is indicating, I keep on the hand with the power professionals and teaching assistants. In unity, Linda S. and Hannah.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you, Hannah, thank you, Lily.
Yes, thank you both. Uh Board of Education, anything else? All right. With that, we will take a motion to adjourn for now. Motion?
Aye.
Ms. DeGatano? Seconded by?
Yep.
Aye.
Seconded by by Ms. Mr. Nickwitz. All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Be well, everyone, and stay safe.
Be safe. Be a positive.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.